Forward and what it does, it's not just to-
... T was given to the public to register to participate or email the city clerk 24 hours prior to the commission meeting with any questions, comments, concerns on items we will hear on this evening's agenda. Any person may be heard by the city commission through the chair and upon registering pursuant to the published notice for not more than three minutes on any proposition before the city commission unless modified by the chair. This meeting is being streamed live at miramarfl.gov/commissionmeeting and televised on Comcast Channel 78 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99 for City of Miramar subscribers. As of July 6, 2022, at 6:00 PM, no members from the public have registered to participate virtually in this meeting. If someone has registered later than this time and would like to speak, they can raise their hand on their device and at the appropriate time, our IT staff will unmute their mic to allow them to speak. Please be sure to mention your name and address for the record prior to addressing the commission. All comments submitted will be included as part of the record for this meeting and will be considered by the city commission prior to any action being taken. At this time, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Massam?
Here.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chambers?
Here.
Vice Mayor Colburn?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
City Manager Dr. Virgin?
Here.
City Attorney Norris Weeks?
Yeah.
City Attorney Powell?
Here.
Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we have a couple of bereavement notifications on our commemoration list, starting with our city Miramar employees. Adrielle Brown from Procurement, Lost Uncle. Patricia Lawrence from Finance, her aunt. And let us all, as the City of Miramar, keep the community of Highland Park, Illinois, in our prayer after the deadly shooting during their Independence Day parade. At this moment, we'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. We have a few presentations on the agenda, and our first presentation will be done by the Education Advisory Board 2022 Annual Scholarship Award winners. At this time, I would like to call forward Advisory Board member Tanisha Taylor to the podium for the presentation. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor Massam, the commission. Forgive me, I forgot my glasses, so. My name's Tanisha Taylor. I am the Chair of the Education Advisory Board, and on behalf of the EAB, I'm delighted to announce and celebrate the winners of our fifth annual scholarship award. We have two winners, Tyreek Walker and Tyler Robinson. Tyreek Walker is a graduate of Miramar High School, will be attending the University of Miami, and majoring in architecture. And Tyler Robinson is graduating from Somerset Arts Conservatory, attending Florida A&amp;M, and majoring in engineering. Each student will receive a $1,000 scholarship on behalf of the EAB. And last but not least, I would like to thank our donors and sponsors for their continued support, and the EAB members, who are also in the audience with us, for their time and commitment over the years. Congratulations to Tyreek and Tyler, if they're here in the audience.
If we can have them stand to be recognized, and let's give them a warm Miramar round of applause. Is only Tyreek here?
And just a quick note, every year we receive over 40 applications, and it's more competitive every year. So it came down to a tie, and these are the top two. So it's very well deserved and hard fought for. So congratulations again on your future accomplishments.
Congratulations again, and all the best in your next phase of life and education. And like to keep in touch, always like to mentor future engineers and architects. So welcome to the field. Our next presentation is the Local Government Academy graduation. Will Chief of Staff Cassandra Carvallo Lindsay come to the podium for the presentation? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, and Madam City Clerk. My name is Cassandra Carvallo Lindsay, and I am the Chief of Staff in the Office of the City Manager. I am here this evening on behalf of our City Manager, Dr. Roy Virgin, and CFO Susan Gooden-Lieberg, to acknowledge the 2022 graduates of the Local Government Academy. Now, this program was launched on May 10, 2022, and it was designed to give our residents an opportunity to learn how local government works, and also for them to get involved in the city. Now, I'm pleased to say that our amazing residents have completed this 10-week program and are now ready to graduate. Now, at this time, I'm going to invite our City Manager to the front of the stage to present the graduates with their certificates. So the first graduate that we would like to call this evening is none other than Mr. Winston Waldman. Is Mr. Waldman here today? Come on up, Mr. Waldman. Come on, let's give him a big round of applause. If you could please remain standing. Our next graduate is Demetria Clayton. Is Demetria here today? If you could please remain standing. Our next graduate is Denise Lasarte. Is Ms. Lasarte here? Our next graduate is Michelle Butler. Michelle Butler? Awesome. Our next graduate is Ms. Janine Jones. Let us give her a big round of applause as she comes. Next, we have Mr. Richard Taylor. Mr. Taylor? Next, we have Ms. Serena Thomas. Our next graduate is Ms. Christina Sprouse. Our next graduate is Ms. Sharia Williams. Next, we have Mr. Brandon Skinner. Mr. Skinner, are you here? But we can still give him a big round of applause if he's here to accept his certificate. And last but not least, our next graduate is Mr. Joshua Rhodes. Mr. Rhodes? I would like to present to you this evening our 2022 graduates of the Local Government Academy. Can we give them a final round of applause? City Manager, I turn over to you.
Thank you very much, Cassandra, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and to the graduates. I'm very humbled and pleased to have this opportunity to thank not the staff so much who put this on, but to the graduates who have taken the time out for many evenings to sit there, to listen to all the information that has been provided by not only each department, but also to the Commissioners who have also given the kind of information that we know will serve you very well in the future. One of the things that when this program was initiated was to look at how the community can best benefit from knowledge as to how local government operates. And I must say, having been to every single one of those meetings, that it was indeed a very educational and uplifting opportunity. And I know and I'm sure that this program will only grow from strength to strength. I'm going to ask the Commissioners to join us for a photo op with these illustrious graduates before we close out. Thank you, thank you. And congratulations, and this reminds me of when I was graduating from high school. A great job, great job. And thank you, Cassandra, for wonderful work.
Congratulations again. And moving the agenda, our next presentation will be COVID-19 and Emergency Management Update from Fire Rescue firefighter Tara Smith. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager, Tara Smith, Fire Rescue. This evening, we'll start just with a brief look at the numbers and the trends. So we are, as a note, in the height, of course, of school vacations. So now all of the schools are out, so individuals are heading different places and having parties and such. So that said, we do expect to see an increase in the number of cases and the positivity rate over the next couple of months. However, we are happy to note at this time that since the last time we met, the positive case numbers in Florida decreased by over 100,000, and Broward County decreased by over 10,000. So that is always a positive when we know that individuals are getting out and about. And we are also seeing increases in boosters, in first and second booster shots as well. So individuals are still pursuing ways to make sure they are protected against COVID. So right now, we are at, as a state, 71%, which may sound lower than you've heard it before. Reason for that is that if you recall last meeting, we had noted that the vaccines are now eligible for ages six months and up. So that will, of course, add an entire new population to our numbers here. So 71% for fully vaccinated. Now, in terms of an update on the actual vaccination numbers, I did want to provide just a little brief snippet for you for the individuals, six months to five years, which is the newest population. So in the state of Florida, in the two weeks since the vaccine has been made available for that age set, it has actually had over 5,000 children in that age range have began the three-shot vaccine for children six months to five years. So for it being only two weeks, that's certainly a good start for us. So we didn't really have anything in the last time period in terms of city and county changes that are impacting individuals based on COVID. All of our testing sites are still remaining the same within the city, as are all of our vaccination sites. And as always, that information is available on the website, and it does go out in other means as well. Now, last time we did speak regarding travel updates, there was a wonderful point brought up regarding the air travel requirements changing. We did want to provide a little bit more information regarding some of the nuances to travel that still exist. As we have spoken about, it can be very complicated, and we are coming to a time of year where travel is going to be heightened, for sure. So really, the individuals impacted would be any non-U.S. citizens and non-immigrants, which could be certainly if a lot of relatives are visiting individuals here, that is something good to note, that air travel testing requirements were lifted for all U.S. citizens and visa holders, but any non-U.S. citizen or non-immigrant would still be required to show proof of vaccination to travel by air into the United States. And then, to further complicate things, land and sea travel are also different. They do not require vaccination proof, they require testing proof. So if you are coming across the Mexican border or the Canadian border, or traveling on a cruise ship and coming into the United States, whether it just be for a day, or you're coming to visit, and those are your ports of entry, you would need to have testing performed then at that juncture as well. So just if anyone's having family visit or anything of that nature. But otherwise, there continues to be differentiations between all countries and certain states and different cruise lines in regards to what they require. So we still encourage everyone to just check with where you're traveling to and how you're getting there, the company that you're utilizing or anything like that, just to ensure that you are fully prepared to take your vacation. And the hotline, as always, is open for COVID questions still for Broward County Health Department. And the final point here, we are still having additional items that we are monitoring. So the top of which is probably on everyone's news is monkeypox. We do note that the CDC has 560 cases now across the United States. Florida has 64 cases. It is worth noting at this time that the CDC does not recommend widespread vaccinations for the monkeypox virus. It may be recommended for individuals who have come in direct contact with someone who already has monkeypox, which is characterized specifically by the monkeypox rash, which there are many pictures available. But it's very difficult to transmit between individuals unless an individual has an active rash and you are in very close contact with that individual. So the CDC still has it listed as a low risk for individuals in the United States at this time, and, as I stated, not recommending widespread vaccinations unless you fall into the population of individuals who is directly exposed, or you're working in a laboratory on testing and things of that nature with monkeypox. And of course, we are in hurricane season. We do not have anything on the radar for the next five days, but we remind everyone to make sure you're still always prepared and ready, just in case. Any questions or comments?
Are there any questions or comments to Ms. Smith?
Sorry, just to say thank you for the clarification with the cruise ships. That is different, people think, and I actually thought that air travel and land and sea were similar. So thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. Before we go to Consent Agenda, there has been a request from the Education Advisory Board if they could have a photo with the commission along with our scholarship recipients that are present. If you all could just meet me at the front at the dais. Okay, on to Consent Agenda. Items listed under Consent Agenda are viewed to be routine, and the recommendation will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. If discussion is desired, items will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. The clerk received no request to speak from the public on the Consent Agenda. Does any member of the public present in the chambers have any comments or questions regarding the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, back to the dais. Are there any items that wish to be pulled or may I have a motion for approval?
Motion to appro- Are you pulling?
Five. Just for a presentation to get us up to date on the solid waste issues.
What number was that?
Five. Five.
Okay. May I have a motion on the balance of the Consent Agenda, please?
Motion to approve?
Second. Record the votes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Massam?
Yes. Item number five, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Miramar, Florida, approving the Third Amendment to the settlement agreement with Broward County for the litigation styled City of Sunrise et al. versus Broward County, authorizing the City Manager to execute the Third Amendment and providing for an effective date.
Good evening.
Good evening, how's everybody? Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorneys, City Clerk, all those in attendance here and on the web. Would you like a presentation or is there certain questions?
Yes.
Yes. If you could just, just bring us up to speed as to where we are and why we're here in terms of the solid waste issues in the county. So it's kind of a broad, but this has somewhat to do with that. And you're knowledgeable, you're the guru in solid waste. So in a nutshell, let us know where we are.
All right. So this item, we can go to the next slide, please. The commission approval is required to authorize extension or execution of the Third Amendment to settle the agreement with Broward County for litigation styled in the City of Sunrise concerning Alpha 250 site, which is located in Pompano Beach. It's a site that was purchased with funds from the previous ILA that all the cities fought to retain ownership for. It's important, if you go to the next slide, please. So quick background, in 2015, the City Commission adopted a resolution, can you guys hear me okay? Authorizing settlement agreement for litigation with Broward County. The agreement provides for the county and selling municipalities to agree to use their best efforts and take responsibility- best efforts and take responsibility to sell the parcel of land known as Alpha 250, which is just a vacant property right now. It's an asset belonging to Broward County Silhouettes Disposal District through subsequent amendments on the, in 2016 and 2018, and both amendments were approved extending the sale of the delay period. Back in 2019, the City Commission adopted a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with Broward County and other participating municipalities, formalizing a shared desire to establish and implement a regional solid waste system, which we still don't, excuse me, still do not have. The Solid Waste Working Group brought elected officials from several municipalities, forming the task of establishing this regional system. The Third Amendment will continue to allow us of Broward County to further amend the sale of the Alpha 250 in order to provide the Solid Waste Working Group an opportunity to continue working towards this regional system. The Third Amendment extends the sale until October, excuse me, 2023. All settling and consenting municipalities need to approve it by October of this year. The reason it's important is because as part of a regional system, it is literally the only asset besides the Broward County landfill that the county and/or the municipalities own. All other properties, the property, the Wheel of Raider property is owned by the county. However, the property, the building is owned by Wheel of Raider itself, so we don't even own that building. This is the only asset other than the landfill that the county owns. This is important for us as we continue to move forward and try to regionalize either, regionalize the system, whether it's to use that for the municipalities up north, or maybe it's a bargaining chip sometime in the future, we could trade a property with some of the other private companies that are more centrally located so everybody can enjoy it. But then again, this has just given us an opportunity to, for really lack of a better term, kick that can down the road a little bit before we sell the property. As far as the Solid Waste Working Group goes, they're continuing to work and hone this ILA. We actually had a meeting, excuse me, a meeting today where there was, where it's starting to come together. There is a lot of stuff that remains. Without getting into too much detail, the last meeting, two of the attorneys, they fought for an hour and a half for the word whether or if should be included. So this is just a quick example of how it's going. Today was a much better meeting, we made some progress, and we really do expect the ILA to be ready for review for all the elected officials as well of our own city attorneys to give them feedback within the next couple of months, I would say by the end of the summer. And then the next step will really be to create a master plan. Bad news about today's master plan was its original 18 months, but now they've given the opportunity or the ability to extend that to three years. Some means the master plan for our whole regional system, which is going to guide everything, how it's done, how the governing boards are established, how the executives direct or set, all this kind of stuff, partnerships we get into, they've given three more years to create it. We've already been doing this two years. So it's been slow, they're making progress, it's a lot to do, you know, but everybody's kind of giving a yeoman's effort, but it is a slow process.
Thank you so much for that update, I appreciate that.
You know, I hit a lot of stuff, so I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion on item number five, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Record the votes.
Mishna Barnes?
Yes.
Mishna Chambers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colburn?
Yes.
Mishna Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Massam?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number six.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Miramar, Florida, approving appointments to various city boards and providing for an effective date.
Okay, we have a few vacancies to be filled by commissioners for their appointment, starting with the Cultural Center Arts Park Advisory Board. Commissioner Davis, you have one vacancy, there's one applicant, Loriann M. Cox. Do you have an appointee for this seat?
I see that Loriann has also applied for the Parks and Recreation. So I'm just going to give that more thought and not appoint here.
Okay, so let's move down to Economic Development Advisory Board. Commissioner Davis, you have a vacancy at that seat, there are several applicants.
This one I'm going to appoint Leo Gilling.
Which?
I'm going to appoint him to the Economic Development Advisory Board. That is one of the ones that he is in favor of being on, as well as Parks and Recreation. But I'm going to nominate him for the economic development.
Can you repeat the name again? I didn't hear, I'm sorry. The name, the appointee's name again? For Economic Development, or is it another board? I didn't hear the first part of it, that's why I'm asking.
Leo Gilling.
Okay. No, I didn't hear the name, I didn't hear the name. Leo Gilling, okay. Parks and Rec Advisory Board, there are three vacancies, Commissioner Chambers, Vice Mayor Colburn, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Chambers, do you have an appointee?
Can they go first?
Excuse me?
I'm going to allow Vice Mayor to.
And if you're not ready, you don't have to, this meeting, so. Vice Mayor Colburn?
I would not be appointing tonight.
Commissioner Davis, you have two appointments. Do you have an appointee or appointees for the two vacancies?
At this time, I have two, let me see. Joshua Rhodes, I'll do Joshua Rhodes, and Sharia D. Williams.
Commissioner Chambers, are you ready to make an appointment?
No.
Okay. I'm not ready to make my team counsel appointment yet. So recapping for the record, appointments made this evening, Economic Development Advisory Board, Commissioner Davis appoints Leo Gilling. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Commissioner Davis appoints Joshua Rose and Sharia Williams. May I have a motion on these appointments, please?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Since Loriann was not picked up on the Parks and Recreation, I will go ahead and appoint her to the Cultural Arts Advisory Board.
To let the record reflect, Cultural Center Arts Park Advisory Board, Commissioner Davis appoints Loriann Cox. May I have a motion on the appointments, please?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Record the votes.
Mishna Barnes?
Yes.
Mishna Chambers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colburn?
Yes.
Mishna Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Massam?
Yes. Item number seven, please.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Miramar, Florida, establishing a proposed milit rate for tax year 2022, fiscal year 2023, providing for the rollback rate, providing for a date, time, and place of the public hearing to consider the proposed milit rate and tentative budget, providing for advertisement and for transmittal to the property appraiser and tax collector, and providing for an effective date.
Evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners and staff. Rafael San Miguel with the Management and Budget Department. I'm here to present two items with one presentation. We have Tempreso 7673, proposed milit rate, and Tempreso 7672, the proposed fire assessment items. So again, as before, it's two items, one presentation. So I will now go over the proposed 2023 budget. So the total proposed budget for all funds is $333 million. General fund is 59% of that, or 169 million, and that includes, that's where we house public safety, community and culture departments, admin, and public works and so forth. Enterprise funds, which includes the utilities funds and the stormwater fund, is 19% or 53 million. Internal service funds, which include the health, risk, fleet, and IT internal service funds, is 14% or 46 million. Debt service, which is where we pay all of our governmental type debt, is 4% or 12 million. Capital projects funds and special recovery funds stand at 2% each. And lastly, sub-funds are less than 1%. If we drill down further to the general fund, we see that it has increased 9.7 million or 5.2% from the previous year's adopted budget. This increase is due to personal services mainly, and that increase, the personal service increase itself by 6.2%. The main driver of that, of course, is collective bargaining, along with pension, healthcare costs, and other benefits. Operating increased slightly by 2.2 million, mainly due to contractual increases, operating supplies, and internal service charges. In terms of the revenues to the general fund, the ad valorem taxes make up the bulk or at 44%. Permit fees and special assessments, that's 21%. Other taxes, which include utility taxes, electricity, gas, and water, insurance premium taxes for police and fire, communication service taxes and local business taxes stand at 11%. Charges for services, which include ticket sales, rentals, and park fees, is 10%. Intergovernmental revenues, such as the local government half cent sales tax, stand at 9%. Others, such as transfers from the grants funds, are 4%, and miscellaneous is around 1%. In terms of the general fund expenses, by far the largest expense category is salaries and benefits, which stand at 70% for 23. Operating expenses stand at 21%, and transfers to other funds, which mainly fund the debt service in other funds, is 5%. Others, which include capital outlays, such as the vehicle replacement program, debt service in the general fund, grants and aids, and pension trust transfers, stand at 4%. So if we break down the general fund salaries and benefits further, employee pay is 62% of that, and pension is 19% of that. So that together, that's 81% for current employee pay and retiree pay. The remaining items are health at 7%, payroll taxes at 4%, workers' comp at 3, and other benefits around 5%. Breaking down the general fund differently by category, the lion's share of the, is public safety, which stands at more than half or 52%. The remaining 48% is made up of community and culture, which includes building, planning, and zoning, economic development and revitalization, cultural arts, parks and recreation, and social services, they stand at 20% of the total. Administration, which includes City Commission, City Manager, HR, legal, City Clerk, marketing, finance, procurement, and management and budget, that's 11% of the total general fund budget. Others, which include retiree benefits, OP, firefighters and police pension benefits, emergency preparedness, employee awards, et cetera, that's the non-departmental category, that's 5%. And the debt service is 6%, that's mainly takes shape of transfers to other funds. So in this chart, on the left, you have the revenues, and on the right, you have the expenses for the general fund. And the top left column, that's the green and purple, the ad valorem taxes and the fire fee revenues, they pay for our critical safety expenses, public safety expenses, which is police and fire. That's the top right column, the blue area. So the bottom left of the other column, of the left column, then shows all of the other revenues, such as other taxes, charges for services, permit fees and special assessments, intergovernmental revenues, and others which amount to around 87 million, which in turn pays for the other governmental services on the right bottom right column, such as community and culture, administration, public works, debt service, and others. So it shows that we are paying our most critical needs with our paycheck, basically, our most sure, our surest source of revenue. So this is the position summary for the general fund, it's a table that you can find in the proposed budget for 23. As you can see, we're adding just one FTE to the police department, and 1.6 FTEs are being transferred in from other funds for a total net increase to the general fund of 2.6 FTEs. So in this slide, this position summary summarizes the positions for all funds. On the top row, in gray, we see the total from the previous slide from the general fund. We see that we've added a total of seven FTEs, that's the bottom right, of 12 funds, six of which are for utilities funds, and the other one is for the general fund. So that's a total of net of seven FTEs to the budget. The transfers in and out, net out to zero in the end, that's the next to last column. So in summary, we are proposing 1,139 FTEs for all funds, 900.6 of which belong to the general fund, and seven FTEs overall increase from the previous year's adopted budget. So we are not proposing to raise either the milit or fire fee for fiscal year 23. The proposed rate for fiscal year 23 is 7.1172, which is 9.59% greater than the rollback rate of 6.4943. The proposed residential fire fee is unchanged at $398.23. So if you look at the top, sorry, at the bottom left box, you can see that the average homesteaded single-family home, its taxable value has increased by $7,500. So that increase is wholly due to the property valuation that we have experienced in the past, which for the homestead properties are capped around 3% per the Save Our Homes provision. So this means that the average homesteaded property will see a modest tax increase of $53.13, or $4.42 per month in fiscal year 23. Of course, this increase or decrease varies on the individual valuation, where properties that have a higher valuation would correspond to a higher tax, and properties with a lower valuation correspond to a lower tax. If you shift your focus to the bottom right, the average commercial, the taxable value for the average commercial has gone up by $30,000, which equates to a $218 increase of city taxes for the year. The average size of the average commercial has not increased significantly, so that it will not experience an increase in the fire fee, also because we're not changing the fire fees for that category either. So again, we are not proposing an increase to the fire fee for 23. It is proposed at the same rate of $398.23 for residential. The Fire Protection Assessment Study was last updated in 2018, and we're going through an update right now. Provision of fire protection services is fully funded through the Fire Protection Assessment through the principle of cost recovery. And please keep in mind that this principle of cost recovery is based on fire suppression and excludes fire rescue and EMS costs. There exists a residential hazard exemption, which is available to residents who meet the requirements, and the application period this year ends in July 31st, at the end of this month, and 100 properties did qualify for that exemption in the previous year. So this slide shows a comparison of the taxes and fees that the average homesteaded residents pays in each of our peer cities in Broward County. So I, we define peer cities by the cities in Broward County that are 100,000 residents or more. It shows cities with that, with that population, and we took into account not only city tax and fire fee, but we also included the debt obligated milit, the stormwater fees, and solid waste fees, to get a good comparison of the cities in our peer group, what the average homesteaded single-family home would pay in those cities. And as you can see, we stack up quite favorably, only paying higher taxes like Pembroke Pines and Pompano Beach in our peer group for Lauderdale, Davie, Hollywood, and Coral Springs, the average single-family homesteaded properties pay just a little bit more than that. So we are right in the middle and to the, in the lower quadrant there, so we stack up quite favorably. So this, I want to show this again, this is sample average trim notice that each property owner receives in each August. If you zoom into the items box to the bottom left, we see the items list of taxing authorities along with their proposed milit rates. As you can see, Miramar is only one of those line items. It shows the previous milit and the proposed milit for the next year. There are 12 different milit items from seven different taxing authorities, and Miramar, as can be seen, is around 35% of the total ad valorem total for the, for the tax, or for the trim notice at least, and it's the same deal for the tax bill that we receive in November. So now, I'd like to introduce Chief Budget Officer Norm Mason to talk about other factors.
Good evening.
Good evening. Norm Mason, Member of the Budget
Norm Mason, member of the budget team. So we're going to look at a few factors that affect the tax bill and your budget. So as Rafael had explained, the city of Miramar, after he showed the total there, thirty-five percent of the entire bill though is the city of Miramar with that breakdown he gave you. Thirty-two percent is the school board of Broward County, twenty-eight percent is Broward County and that portion of the tax bill and then five percent, I'll get into what that is. So Miramar is thirty-five percent of the total tax bill you receive and sixty-five percent of those other entities. Now, each of these authorities, they adopt a separate millage rate. So the first one obviously is the city of Miramar, Broward County, as I said, the school board of Broward County. Now in addition, you have South Broward Hospital District, South Florida Water Management District, the Florida Inland Navigation District, Children's Services Council of Broward County. So those are the seven entities and taxing authorities that make up your entire tax bill. So Miramar is one of seven entities in that tax bill. Now let's look at not the rates, but just how many millage rates are associated with your tax bill. There's a dozen and the city of Miramar is one of those. Broward County has two, one for debt and one for their services. The school board of Broward County as well has debt, services and another voter levy millage rate. And you can see the remainder, the hospital district, South Florida Water Management has three, inland navigation and children's services. So I'm just showing you that there's actually twelve components of millage rates that are part of your bill. So each of those adopt a millage rate and I just want to let you know that I'm glad you're viewing or you're here tonight to be a participant with the city of Miramar's budget, but I would encourage you to be equally participant in the other entities. And you see there are eleven other millage rates that affect your tax bill. So there are meetings for each one of those and they adopt a separate individual millage rate associated with each of those districts. And all of those combined are what comprise your tax bill. Now let's look at what drives the expenditures, okay? I usually get a question of why can't we keep the budget flat from year to year, from twenty-two to twenty-three? And there is very many reasons for that. One of them is we're the fourth largest, as Rafael has shown, with population increases. So that increases your demand for services because obviously you have more users. We should all be associated with supply and chain issues, but also supply and demand. That's how your marketplace works, the higher your demand, the higher your cost, the lower your supply, the higher your cost as well. Collective bargaining drives, as Rafael said, the majority of that increase from year to year, which I'll show you, is over six percent in collective bargaining. Nation-wise, healthcare has gone up, other post-employment benefits and pensions are all driven by the collective bargaining as well. Crime is an issue that has to be dealt with in each budget. I'll talk a little bit about why we need more public safety in every city and I'm sure you're aware of that, but public safety needs continue to go up because of situations. Technology concerns equally as important as physical concerns in terms of crime, but there is technology crime as well as just providing all the services we need in the city. So that's critical to invest in that. We have a post-COVID effect, that's why we continue to have a report about COVID. So that is still something that we have to spend money on. Events, I look back today, I put this on four years ago and it's just a part of the budget. It's not a lot of money, but you have to think about now, I predicted four years ago that public safety would probably be more involved. You can look back at the tape after Parkland in twenty eighteen, I said that at a financial focus workshop. And so now we see the increase because unfortunately we're here today and we need elevated levels of police presence at every event. And that's not just the city of Miramar, that's every city unfortunately across the United States right now. That's why your public safety expenses have to go up to address the situation that we're unfortunately in. Next you have supply chain issues that again affect the city, certainly affect our CIP, but it affects a lot of things as you're well aware of. So that causes your costs to go up. Tariffs are passed on to consumers and then you have energy and fuel, at this point you're all aware of the constraints we have on pricing and what we're facing at the pump as well as those same expenditures that the city has to pay for fuel as well. So all those things drive your budget. So I looked back at this and we had the potential with inflation right now, the war and also the potential for recession. So we're navigating through all these, there's twenty items on there. I look back again, four years ago I had a dozen items. And so I go through this on a weekly basis to see what things are challenging the city and all cities. And so we've gone from twelve major issues driving our expenditures to twenty now. So that puts a stress on the budget. But the good thing is most of this, from the stock market to the supermarket, we don't like uncertainty and so it's not a friend to the economy or a stable environment. But in my opinion, a number of these things will be addressed in the next six months, especially inflation and interest rates and those type of things because the year's going to be over, so I'm going to be able to tell you how many interest rate hikes we have and where we're at. That will affect supply and demand, obviously it will affect the recession and inflation. There hopefully will be issues resolved such as the war and some of the other things you see on that screen like COVID. So hopefully that will improve the situation, but we budget accordingly with these twenty factors to address them. And so you know, I could take this across the country and show it to most cities, these are the main drivers of your expenditures. You could come to my office and sit for eight or ten hours and go over every line in the budget, but this is a more useful exercise than going over every line in the budget is looking at these issues and how can you help me? How can you help the budget department relieve us from the increases of these twenty different stress factors on the budget? So those are really the drivers across our budget and most every city in the United States. Now let's look at a comparison because when Rafael showed the budget is going up, you might say, well, how does that stack up? Is is five percent good? So I looked up some things with staff, the state of Florida adopted their budget for July first, they're on a different fiscal year, about a hundred and ten billion that the they got approved and that's an eight point three percent increase from last year. Broward County hasn't released theirs fully yet, called them today, but they have a preliminary one, so I don't have the whole thing. So last year they had a six point seven billion dollar budget at twenty-six percent. From what I see this year, it'll be double digits, again, over ten percent. Fort Lauderdale released theirs last night, nine hundred and eighty-one million or a nine point three percent increase for all of their funds and about four hundred and thirty-eight million is their general fund, which is a nine point two percent increase. City of Miramar, as was presented, the all funds is reduced by five point six percent mainly due to the CIP is being developed still, so that's not fully in there, that will be updated before our meetings later in September. And then the general fund is going up five point two percent at about a hundred and ninety-six million. Now if we hit one more time, you see inflation, eight point six percent. So just as a benchmark for everybody to see, you see a range from the state of Florida eight percent, including inflation eight point six, all the way up to Broward County at twenty-six percent. So Miramar is certainly at five point six percent or sorry, five point two percent is certainly below the other ones. And that's really a tribute to the budget process, the team, city management, the directors, the staff and the city commission. So all of us are a part of this in containing our costs. So for me, that's an excellent job because we are below all of those other major entities and I'll be collecting more from other cities, but it's tough to get all that information at this point when they're preliminary. And one other thing that is different than all the other cities, we don't do budget amendments to increase our expenditures. So the state of Florida, Broward County, city of Fort Lauderdale, they do half a dozen or more budget amendments every year to increase their budget. And so we don't, I don't allow that in terms of my capacity, but I make each department work with us to live within their budget. Now don't call me out after this, we're going to do a budget amendment, but it's for the CIP, it's not for operating expenditures, just to clarify that. So that will come later. So thank you. At this point, I'm going to introduce Pete Napoli from Stantec and as you've seen before, but we're going to go through the five-year general fund forecast and he's done some updates from our previous presentation from last week. So I'll turn it over to Pete Napoli. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. I have a brief presentation for you guys today summarizing the results of our updated financial sustainability analysis. The agenda for today includes a brief overview of our sustainability analysis and our modeling process, a little background on the analysis, an update on the data and assumptions that went into updating this year's forecasting model, an updated baseline assumption or baseline projection, some potential solution projections and then an opportunity to look at the live model and discuss. So our financial sustainability modeling process includes a five-year projection of the city's general fund financial health. And really what it does is it simulates the future cash flows based on the city's current level of service. So the revenues and expenses associated with all the different departments in the city's general fund are projected over five years. This allows the the city management and commission to have a framework for scenario evaluation and sensitivity analysis and it helps you evaluate the long-term impact of current decisions. And really ultimately our plan is to or our goal is to develop a plan for financial sustainability over a five-year timeframe. So we've been performing this analysis for the city of Miramar since twenty sixteen and it's become a part of the annual budget process. It it allows the city to to consider the long-term impact of their decisions that they they make when establishing their upcoming budget. This this snapshot that you're seeing on the screen here is from last year's baseline analysis and it's two charts that represent the results of last year's baseline five-year projection. So last year, some of the key assumptions that were incorporated included healthcare savings, reduced salary increases over the five-year projection and ARPA funding. You can see in the last year of the projection, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, we're projecting the general fund's reserve balance, the general fund savings account to fall below that minimum required target. Our proposed solution at the end of our analysis last year was to consider in the future fiscal year twenty twenty-five, a workforce reduction of twenty FTEs and that could be achieved in any way we were assuming attrition. So the data and assumptions that were used to update this year's forecasting model and baseline analysis included the adjusted fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, your preliminary or proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget and that budget serves as the basis for the rest of the projection. So the the FTE count, the level of programs and level of service that is incorporated and reflected by the fiscal fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget is assumed to be carried forward for the five-year projection. Our five-year projection assumptions include revenue escalation factors through by line items throughout the entire general fund budget and cost escalation factors specific to the type of cost personnel services versus operating expenses and by department. We also have the capital improvement transfer assumed to be continued throughout the five-year projection and that reflects about one percent of the total expenses. The vehicle replacement program is assumed to be continued throughout the five-year projection. The OPEB and pension trust fund transfer transfers as part of an initiative is continued throughout the projection and then the scheduled debt service payments. We also have the ARPA funds, five million for fiscal year twenty-two and two million for fiscal year twenty-three included as one-time cash flows. So this next slide here shows you the results of our updated baseline analysis and starting from the top, you'll see that we have the millage rate at seven point one one seven two assumed to be held flat for the five-year projection. We have your taxable value increases, the actual taxable value increase for fiscal year twenty-three, your upcoming year per the property appraisers data. So that's a total of a ten point seven five percent increase. And going forward, and this is consistent with last year's baseline, we had five percents included as the existing taxable value increase in comparison to the eight point nine percent which you just experienced. And then we have the percentage increase associated with new development, which we got an actual schedule of the new development projects and the estimated taxable value associated with all of them. On the left-hand side, the fund balance graph, you can see the projected fund balance for the city's general fund and the updated baseline results are showing the fund balance to fall below the minimum reserve requirement in fiscal year twenty twenty-four this time. So it's it's a product of the right-hand graph in which you see the red line representing cash flows, cash out or expenses, total expenses for the city's general fund and then the black line representing all of the revenues. Whenever that red line is above the back black line, you're going to be operating at a deficit and you'd have to use reserve balance in order to cover that gap between revenues and expenses. So you can see the result of that is shown on the left-hand graph with the reserve fund balances declining. So the updated baseline results are less positive than last year's baseline. On the right-hand side of the screen, you can see the both graphs stacked, so you can see the difference between last year's baseline and this year's baseline. Last year is in the green and this year is in the blue. This is a result of a number of changes in the forecasting model, one being there's higher salary increases programmed for the five-year forecast. It was a part of an initiative and a potential solution last year to incorporate an average of three percent over the five years for salary increases. When getting together with staff and updating the model this year, it felt like it was more appropriate to put four and a half percent as a baseline. So it has a big impact on the projections and salaries are the majority of personnel services are the majority of the budget. There's also higher inflationary increases associated with operating supplies and capital and that can be seen nationwide, inflation is is out of control right now. Higher debt service obligation associated with some recent issuances and then there's higher near-term capital investment. So together, all of those differences from last year's baseline contribute to this updated forecast. This screen here shows a potential solution scenario or or rather just a potential scenario to consider for the future. The difference on this screen, you can see highlighted at the top, there is a continued value increase or a higher taxable value increase and that's really a result of what we saw this past year. And this would assume that this higher housing market increase would continue for the near term and this would be the impact of it. So we included seven and a half percent for the average taxable value increase of existing properties in the city. We have the same new development taxable value increase. We've also included a reduction to the workforce in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six, that total twenty-five employees. The combination of these two impacts, both are increased revenues from the taxable value and property tax side and then decreased operating expenditures related to the FTE decrease. So the result of that stabilizes the reserves over the five-year period. The second scenario shows a potential scenario where we would keep the five percent property or taxable value increases and that would really reflect slowdown in the market, so have the the market cool off a little bit. And then we would include a point two five millage rate increase in fiscal year twenty-four for consideration. That equates to about three point two million dollars in additional annual revenues, so that may be achieved through something like a fire assessment or other sources. We also have an FTE reduction or reduction to the workforce shown in twenty-four and twenty-five, that total twenty employees. And the combined result of these two changes stabilize reserves over the five-year period. That's the conclusion of my presentation and I'll turn it back over to Rafael San Miguel. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. So at this meeting, we are asking the commission to pass the tentative millage rates that will be sent out in the trim notices to the residents in August. So this is the maximum millage rate and fire assessment that can be levied to properties. The rates that are ultimately passed can be lower than these. The rates that are ultimately passed can be lower than these rates, but they cannot be higher unless we notify every single property owner in writing, and that's on our dime. So the city manager recommends approval of the 7.1172 operating millage rate, the 100% fire protection assessment rate, and setting September 14, 2022, as the date for the public hearing on the tentative budget and proposed millage rates. City manager recommends approval.
Thank you for the presentation. The clerk received no request to speak on this item. Does any member from the public inside of the chambers have any comments or questions regarding the presentation? Any members from the public? Seeing, hearing none, back to the dais. I do have a request to speak. Commissioner Barnes, you're recognized.
Just a couple of comments, and if you would respond to my comments with comments of your own. It is, I think, essential for us to have our residents understand that this is really the start of the budget process, and it goes on until, for another six months or so. And also, word has been mentioned of the word inflation, something we've not had to deal with at this level for quite a while. So would you explain, in very general terms, why this is but the start of the budget process? And if you would speak as well about how enhanced property values impact our budget preparation and our ability to maintain the rates?
So I'll answer the first one. So this is the start of the TRIM process. The budget process really started back in February. So in the TRIM process, we get the valuation, we get a June 1 valuation of all of the property in Miramar, so we can kind of set a proposed budget in July. In July 1, we get the actual valuation from our properties, and that's when we can say, this is the expected revenue that we can see from, at valorem revenues, based on the, on this millage that we set every year, right? So we, at this juncture right here, we set those proposed millage rates that go on the TRIM notices to each property owner in August. So, and that includes the, all of the non-at-valorem assessments, including fire and stormwater. The stormwater presentation is coming up next. So in August, those get sent out to the residents. So the residents have another chance, really, to take a look at what that proposal would mean as far as the impact to their bottom line, right? And they have a chance to speak up during now the September meeting. So we have the first meeting set for September 14. That's where we're going to discuss the budget, the proposed, or the tentative fiscal year 2023 budget. And we're going to set the millage rates, and that's the first hearing for the millage rates. And that's also the final hearings for the final fire fee assessment and the stormwater rates. So those, so again, the, so at this juncture right here, we're just going to set the proposed millage, the proposed fire assessment rates, and the proposed stormwater rates. Again, that's the next item that Mr. Collins is going to read. As far as the inflation, can I, can I have you repeat the question? Because with all my diatribe, I can lost it.
No, I'm just saying that we're having to deal with inflation now in ways that we've not had in the recent past. But I also wanted to explain for our residents why they're going to pay more, because their property values have improved.
Right, so...
Even though rates have not changed.
Right, so the property values go up. That's just, that's just the, and we have, we're in a, in a, in an environment, right, where we have just the rising costs of properties is rising. The saving grace for the folks who have a homestead exemption, right, is that we, those are capped at 3% for those who are homesteaded. So even though the actual market value of those properties have gone up by a significant amount, way over 3%, which is the cap, we only cap it at 3%. And this year, that is a modest, that's a modest increase of around $50 something dollars for the homesteaded, for the average homesteaded property owner this year. Again, the, I think of it like this. Your property has gone up in value. Congratulations, you're wealthier now. But that is the downside of this, that you have to pay a little bit more in heat taxes.
For Mason, sorry, I just wanted to add one thing. The inflation we built in with our operating expenditures, but Miramar, at least the last seven years, is very unique with our budget model because we're paying for public safety, police and fire, with the avalorem, as you said, and the fire fee. When you think about revenues, those are guaranteed revenues. They're going to get paid one way or another. If the homeowner doesn't, it's going to be paid through a tax certificate. So that guarantees that we are funded for our police and fire, whole 100%. The majority of your cities, almost all of them in Broward and across the country, have lost that relationship. They got away from them. And so their expenditures for police and fire are much greater than their avalorem and their fire fee. So in consequence of having to provide those services, they have to figure out where those other expenses can be cut so that they have enough money to address fire and police. We don't have to do that, as well as thanks to the valuations increasing. Otherwise, most likely, we would have to address other departments to reduce those expenses as opposed to police and fire, because I can honestly say it's driven by collective bargaining for the most part. And so those increases are in there. But we're very unique that we didn't have to put inflation into the factors of affecting police and fire so much because we already have revenues that aren't affected by COVID so much. Because you can imagine, even the state revenues are based on allocations. All of your revenues are parks and rec, and those are based on demand. And so you don't have that with your fire fee and your avalorem. So that's one unique thing that factors out the inflation for us to provide at least the services. I don't say at least to minimize, but for police and fire, which is our critical services.
Vice Mayor Colburn, followed by Commissioner Davis.
Thank you so much. Thank you for a very thorough presentation. Appreciate it. Always want to thank staff, our budget staff in particular, for all the work that they're doing. It is, it is a good thing that we are able to see a budget before us today as presented by the manager without a need to increase our millage rate and our fire fee. So I am pleased with that. And, you know, I continue my review of the budget, but I just want to thank you at this point for what, the work that you guys are doing. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd also like to commend staff on the work, the presentation, both yourself and the consulting firm. Just a question, though, and I know you had lumped the cities that are over 100,000 residents. And somewhere there, I did notice that our sister city to the north values were lower in terms of their costs to their residents. So what I'd like to see is a breakdown of the millage rate for these cities that are less than us, specifically our city to the north of us, their fire service fee, and how is it, so I can compare why their residents are actually being charged less, rather than just lumping it all into one, you know, let's break it out. And it could be a factor in terms of employees that I know they do tend to use contractors more than having a staffing issue in terms of the overhead to staff. So that could be a factor. But if that could be explained more so, if people ask you when you're out and about, how come we pay more than the neighboring city? You can kind of have a better understanding when you're comparing the two. And as far as the projections, you know, I am glad to see that you're working with the same consulting firm that's done them in the past. But I'm just curious as to how often, is it just once a year that they do that? Do you meet with them halfway through the budget year to see how we are doing, and to compare, making sure we're on track or are there any changes? How often are you meeting with them?
So thank you for the question. It's a, so we engage with STANPAC on a constant basis. We are in touch with them. We, so we started our engagement, our data that we give to them, I want to say back in January. That's when we started the engagement, really. Giving them the updated data, giving them all of the new scenarios, all of the data that we have, all of the preliminary budgets. And so we feed them, as we get the data, we feed them our data, and we have an open conversation with them. And we also meet to look at scenarios and to look at how we're tracking with our latest scenarios. So it is not just a one-time thing that we, that we kind of like get this model and we forget about it, no. And even today, we're not, we're not going to stop today engaging them. We're going to keep feeding them data. We're going to feed them anything that we come up with. So we have still some outstanding revenues that we haven't really received from the state. So we're going to update those revenue figures. We're going to feed them to STANPAC. And then we're going to kind of recolor with the models ever so slightly to see how we're tracking. So in answer to your question, it is a, it's a year-long process that we engage with them.
Perfect, thank you for that.
Commissioner Chambers, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Rafael, for your presentation. You and your team, Mr. Mason. Thanks to the city commission. We work very hard here at the city of Miramar to make things work. We've gone through a lot of ups and downs, and we proceed through. And to be where we are today is a testament to the team that we have to put us on a good track. And this commission is staying engaged and staying involved and try to keep things in place, as I mentioned in the previous workshop. So I'm just grateful to be here to help the city along. And I also want to thank the city manager for, and his team, for making sure that those residents who need to apply for those exemptions, getting the word out, letting them know that it's exemption that they can qualify for in the budget process before July 31. So once again, thank you, and thanks to all the employees that involve here. City of Miramar, thank you.
Like to join the commission in thanking staff for the presentation, always thorough, always comprehensive and enlightening as it relates to the process on how the city is funded, and also sharing with the public the challenges that are ahead. It's always good to be able to propose a millage rate that does not increase. Obviously, we have to continue to be as fiscally responsible as possible to the taxpayer while balancing that with excellent levels of service that our residents do come to, and come to expect from the city of Miramar. So as we continue to go through this budget process, although this is just a TRIM notice, that we ultimately adopt a budget that is sensitive to the current financial climate of the day while ensuring that our residents receive the utmost and best in municipal services. I would like to see, and I'll be meeting with the city manager and staff to see what our plan is going to be as relates to adopting some of the recommendations for our outlook in the forecast. One of the key cornerstones of ensuring that we have sufficient resources to meet our demand without threatening our reserve that we'd like to keep is how do we meet that employee reduction objective while maintaining the level of service for each department? I know that's just a whole round number of 20 that was mentioned. Obviously, the 20 matter in terms of what 20, what employees, what costs for staff that makes up that 20. I'll just be curious to see what plans we'll put in place to guide us as it relates to following that recommendation while maintaining the levels of service for our community. Thanks again for the presentation. At this time, I have a motion on item number seven, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Record the votes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Massam?
Yes, item number eight.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Miramar, Florida, relating to the provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs for the city of Miramar, Florida, establishing the estimated assessment rate for fire protection assessments for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, directing the preparation of an assessment role, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of notice thereof, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening.
It's the same presentation.
So basically, the same presentation. The clerk received no comments from the public on this item. And now I may have a motion to adopt on the fire protection assessments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Record the votes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Massam?
Yes. Item number nine, please.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Miramar, Florida, relating to the provision of stormwater management services in the city of Miramar, Florida, establishing the preliminary stormwater assessment rate for the stormwater management services for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, directing the preparation of an assessment role, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of notice thereof, and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers, City Attorney, City Clerk, Tony Collins, Paul Works Director. Begin. So the item in front of you tonight is the fiscal year 2023 Stormwater Management Service Preliminary Assessment Rate. City Commission approval is required for annual reauthorization of stormwater assessment, establishing preliminary rates and establishing date and time for public meetings for final approval of the annual assessment rate for fiscal year 2023. The purpose of the stormwater management system is to regulate, maintain, and manage stormwater runoff within the city. The city stormwater system was established as an enterprise fund in fiscal year 1998. It provides funding for stormwater system operations, maintenance, construction, debt service, and administration. In fiscal year 2015, the city commenced collecting stormwater fee as an alabel drum taxes. ERU billing method was maintained. Billing method improved collection of fees. One ERU is equivalent to 3,619 square feet, a total of 57,368.73 ERUs throughout the city. A 10-year rate study completed in fiscal year 2016 determined assessment rate must be increased every three years to fund operational needs and capital improvement projects. This chart provides information regarding the 10-year rate comparison. So in fiscal year 2023...
So in fiscal year 2023, the rates is being proposed to be increased to $120 per year, which represent a change of $18, represent a percentage increase of 17.7%. So the current annual assessment rate of $102 per ERU, proposed annual assessment rate of $120 per ERU, again, it represents an $18 annual or dollar and 50 cents per month increase. The projected stormwater management service revenue for FY '23 equates to $6,608.80, $878. Increase is to fund operating costs, debt service and future capital improvement projects. Historic Miramar drainage improvement phase four, five and six are examples of those. These slides depict some of the projects that are funded by the assessment. The canal embankment restoration project is one of those, but of course, the drainage project, we're into the phase four design phase right now. As regards to the public hearing, the purpose of the public hearing is for final approval of the 2023 stormwater assessment. Notice will be published to residents by August 24, 2022. Hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, September 14, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. Just to note that, it was a previous document that was sent out suggesting that the date would have been Tuesday, September 30th, but a correction has subsequently been made by the clerk's office. And city manager recommends approval.
Thank you. The city clerk received no requests to speak on this item. Does any member in the chambers wish to speak or comment on this item? Any members from the public in the chambers? Seeing none, back to the dais. Are there any questions or may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Davis, you're recognized.
Thank you. Just for our residents, so the, this, this figure will appear on their trim notice?
That is correct.
And it's obviously nothing to do with the millage rate?
No, separate, not at all.
Normally this is found, I mean, when I look on my trim notice, it's normally like on the back by itself, separate, just so folks know what to look for. And, and the figure that they will find on it is $120?
That is correct, $120.
I just want to make sure they're clear on that. It is not the millage rate, it has nothing to do with the other taxing authorities. This is simply stormwater assessment, which we do, and it's going to be shown on your trim notice. I thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Barnes, you're recognized.
And you mentioned there is a percentage increase from last year's numbers. Is that a 7% increase I saw on a few slides back?
Yes, it represents a 17.7% increase. What is being proposed?
And our residents say to us, if you're not going to do an increase next year, why don't you split it between this year and next year? What's your response?
It's on me.
A percentage increase from last year to be proposed one going into this year is what percentage?
17.7%.
And our residents will say to us, why didn't you break that up considering you don't plan on an increase next year?
Well, the rate study that we, that was done in 2016 requires that every three years is an increase in the rate. So the $120 that is being proposed, it will carry through for three years. Then once we get to 2026, then there will be-
They call that doubling the numbers.
Are there any other questions for staff? Hearing none, may I have a motion on the item, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Record the votes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Massam?
Yes, item number 10, please.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Miramar, Florida approving the Second Amendment of the fiscal year 2022 operating and capital improvement program budget and providing for an effective date.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners Rafael Samiag with the Management and Budget Department. I'm here to present to you temporary ordinance number 1792, the Second Budget Amendment for fiscal year 2022. That's the current year. And the city manager wishes to amend the budget per the presentation set forth right So the city procurement department advertised invitations to bid for the historic Miramar Drainage Infrastructure Improvement Project Phase Four. The lowest responsible and responsive bid received was just under $13 million. That is excluding allowances for contingencies and construction management services. So we have available $13,119,900 for the project at this point, which means that we have a shortfall of $3 million, which we propose to appropriate from fund balance, $2 million from utilities and $1 million from a stormwater fund to proceed with the project. So in the utilities fund, we are proposing to appropriate $2 million from fund balance and allocate 1.6 million to CIP construction and $400,000 into contingency. And similarly, in the stormwater fund, next slide, thank you, we are proposing to appropriate $1 million from fund balance and allocate it to CIP construction in its entirety. So here's, to the right, you see a map of where the phase four is located. We have a prior year's funding of $14,229,657. We are seeking to increase that funding in the, in this budget to, in this budget amendment, sorry, by $3 million and for a total project cost of $17,229,657. And the city manager recommends approval.
Thank you. City clerk received no request for comment from online viewers. Are there any members from the public in the commission that wish to comment or have questions on item number 10? Any members from the public? Hearing none, back to the dais. Are there any questions or comments? None, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Record the votes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Massam?
Yes. On to quasi-judicial public hearing. Item number 11, please.
Just read the announcement. Notary courts have determined that there are certain types of matters, including the following application, that are to be treated differently than other issues considered by the commission. Most decisions of the commission are legislated in nature, which means that the commission is acting as a policymaking body. In contrast, in quasi-judicial matters, the commission is applying existing rules and policies to a factual situation is therefore acting like a judge or jury in a courtroom. In such cases, the courts have decided that due process and fundamental fairness requires that more formal procedures be followed. The City of Miramar's procedures for quasi-judicial hearings are as follows. All who wish to speak shall be collectively sworn in by the clerk. The hearing shall be conducted in an informal manner. I will read the title of the item to be considered. City staff shall present a synopsis of the application and make a recommendation. Next, there'll be a presentation by the applicant. The commission will then hear from the participants in favor of and in opposition to the application. All witnesses are subject to cross-examination by the city staff, city commission and the applicant. All participant may request that the city commission ask a question of the witness. The applicant and staff may make concluding remarks. No further presentation or testimony shall be permitted and the public hearing shall be closed. All decisions of the commission must be based on competent and substantial evidence presented at the hearing. All backup materials presented at the hearing will automatically become a part of the record of the hearing. All approvers will be subjected to staff recommended conditions unless otherwise stated in the motion for approval. Now, the item is as follows. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Miramar, Florida approving application number 2203289 for the vacation of certain utility easements within the Marketplace Partnership Center Platte as recorded in official record book 47016, page 1695, Public Records of Broward County, Florida and providing for an effective date.
Not to swear in the testimony?
All of those wishing to provide testimony on the following quasi-judicial item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Attorney, City Clerk, South Sunnigan City Engineer. This item is for the vacation of an easement within the Marketplace Partnership Center Platte. Miramar multifamily owner LLC is the applicant and they requested a vacation of a utility easement. In accordance with the Land Development Code, Section 307, City Commission approval is required for the vacation of easements. The applicant, which is a property owner and developer, plans to build a residential development known as Alex and Miramar. This project was approved by City Commission through Resolution Number 21-1558. In order to build the project, the property owner needs to vacate portions of certain utility easements that are in conflict with the proposed site plan. This is the project location. It's located just north of Miramar Parkway and east of 148th Avenue. And this kind of shows the locations of the easements that are in conflict with the proposed site plan. These easements are exclusive to the city only and they are for water and sewer facilities and they will not be needed anymore after they complete these projects. They will provide new easements that will be dedicated to the city for the new water and sewer lines that will be installed as part of the project. City manager recommends approval.
Thank you. Back to the dais. Does anyone have any comments or have any questions for staff based off this presentation? Hearing none. Are there any members from the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the dais. May I have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve. Record the votes.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Massam?
Yes. On to other business, commission reports, item number 12. Number 12's discussion regarding the Key to the City, Commission Meeting Chair Responsibilities, item requested by Vice Mayor Colburn. You're recognized.
Yes, thank you very much. I asked for this item to be placed on the agenda because of what occurred at the last meeting, where the mayor made several statements towards the end of the meeting and after he made those statements, did not give, at least myself, an opportunity to speak on the issue that was raised. Instead, the meeting was, it was just abruptly ended. And, you know, I just, I just felt that it's more collegial that everyone have an opportunity to speak and we can air things out. It's, it'd be good if it's always pleasant, but that's, you know, that's, that's not always the case. But either way, I'm confident that as a commission, we deal with, with many large issues and many more important issues than this. So it begs that where we have small issues that we're so passionate about, that we should be able to deal with them. So what I would like to propose to this commission is that going forward, that there be a motion to adjourn a meeting and a second and let it be voted on before the meeting is adjourned. This is more collegial and it's actually what's done at most board meetings. Meetings don't just end, you know, somebody, you know, you ask for motion to adjourn if there's a second and, and this way, if anybody has anything else to say, they have an opportunity to do so. So I'm asking, there are two parts to this, but at least on this part, I'm asking for consensus from, from my colleagues so that we can make the necessary adjustment as we move forward with board, with our board meeting. The other portion to that of statements that the mayor made, it had to do with the, with the issuance of the Key to the City at an event, a city event that I hosted. The statements were really that he was not aware that this was going to happen, but it was said in such a way as if it would lead someone to believe that maybe there was something, something wrong, you know, that he had to, that he had to be notified. So I just want to make it clear that that's not the case. There is, we guide ourselves by the charter, we guide ourselves by the codes and we guide ourselves by our commission procedures. And there is nothing, neither in our charter, in our code or otherwise, in our procedures that prohibits any of the elected officials here from giving a key to the city to someone. I understand that it's important for us to be collegial. So on other occasions, when I wanted to give a key to the city, I asked the mayor's office for one. The last time I did that prior to this, it was not given to me, contrary to what was said that night. I knew that I didn't have to ask, but I respect, I respect you, Mr. Mayor. I respect all of my colleagues here on this commission. And I do want us to get along on the small things, like we get along on the large things. And, and I asked for a key, but it was not given to me. It was an event, an initiative of mine, and instead the mayor came to the meeting, he came to the event and it, it was not till, we were all on stage and he had the key. I made light of it and we all laughed and moved on. But it, it is disrespectful for us to do something like that. I, I do believe that, again, it's important for us to move on from, from these smaller things. In the City of Miramar, proclamations have always been the topic of conversation. That is the, you know, I would say it's the most important thing that we give to our residents and to others. This is something that we have in our procedures. We have a procedures how to do that. If anybody comes to me and asks for a proclamation, I make sure I go to the mayor's office and I request that that proclamation be done. It is signed off by him. None of that exists with the Key to the City. So it's clear that we, we hold a higher importance on proclamations. We don't have anything written on anything to that extent, no certificates or otherwise, awards or otherwise, only on that. So I, I just wanted to clear, I just wanted to clear the air on that and make it clear that there was nothing done incorrectly when that Key to the City was issued. And I do want to make sure that you're aware, Mr. Mayor, that I took the additional step of checking with our attorneys before I decided to move forward on this, that key was presented by me along with my colleagues that were present, Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Chambers. Had you been there at the event, you would have also been part- Had you been there at the event, you would have also been part of it. That's it for me, thank you.
Well, I have a response to that, and, um, thanks for bringing this, um, topic up, but I do would like to, um, clear the record. There's no amount of script reading on a position to paint picture or the illusion that what transpired during the last commission meeting was done out of disrespect or any harm. I made my comments during the portion of the meeting, during commission reports. For each elected official, at their prerogative, can bring up items of importance, or just information, or whatever they choose to talk about. Does not require discussion, does not require rebut, unless they choose to. I stated a position during the last commission meeting. Since the topic of collegialness or collegiality was raised, we do have commission procedures, of which deals with proclamations and of the sort, which is not always followed. There are certain provisions made for commission requests, and I don't deny commission requests, even though there's a time period that my office should be notified and time and time again. Various commission office makes requests twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, and sometimes even same day of events. And more likely than not, my office bends backwards to ensure that that resident or organization that is being honored have the opportunity to get that proclamation despite the nonconformance of the requested elected official to request that commission. Those are the facts. It has been precedent and customary in the city of Miramar that proclamations, and even on rare occasions, keys to the city is presented by the mayor. As it relates to the Key to the City, there is no written policy, but it has been customary that the mayor, almost the mayor in almost in every city, unless not present, then a designated vice mayor or, or pro temp, depending if it's the council, or an elected official who's designated, presents that. There's been precedent with that. In setting the record straight, I've never denied a request for a key to the city. You may have been disappointed because I presented, and in fact, that's not even true. Cause even on that day, you presented the key that I gave to you to Miss Donna Brazil. But here's the facts, the fact is, although there was precedent, and there is standing precedent in the city of Miramar and other cities, that the mayor presents the key to the city, that the event of question, that my office was not even contacted. You can hide behind a veil that there's no written policy, but you knew. You knew that it was precedent in this city and customary. Just because you want to present key to the city does not mean that there was never precedent. Just because you wanted to present the key to the city and knowing that it was custom, it's customary in the city that the mayor presents the key to the city, that you did not want me to present the key to the city at an event that you were hosting on behalf of the city. So therefore, because it was not written, you went to the city attorneys, which by the way, are not going to inject themselves between any potential conflict or disagreement if they don't have to. Those are the facts, and we understand why they don't want to do that, because they don't wanna be in the disgraces of a commission that on a whim can decide to change them in those kinda situations. So I don't blame them professionally opting out of those type of situations and letting the commission hash it out. But what city, what other city, what other commission, what other council that always tries to find ways to step in on ceremonial things that the mayor of that city does? Who does that? But here. So I'm just stating the facts, those are opinions. I did not abruptly end the meeting last week, it was during my commission report, I gave a position. I didn't need any discussion. I said what I felt, and I said it. Everyone else had the opportunity to talk about their item on the commission during their report, that was my report. And if I give a report, if I don't want discussion, I don't have to have discussion. And those are the facts. You can choose to do what you want as it relates to a key to the city. Yes, there are much more pressing items like the budget we just passed. There's much more pressing items than self glorification that takes place. There's much more pressing items like our residents, like our employees, like our infrastructure that we can talk about. So there can be all the script reading we wanna have to try to paint a picture, but the fact of the matter remains that precedent was voided. Period, no matter how you try to sugarcoat it. But if you wanna create a new policy about keys to the city, or proclamations, or whatever, people see that. The public sees that. So give away as many keys of the cities as you choose, are you pleased? But the fact of the matter is that you went beyond, above, around the mayor's office to present a token of the city without contacting the mayor's office. And I expressed my feelings about it, and I was the last report for that evening, and I ended the meeting. So questions for the attorneys. What authorities does the chair have as it relates to governing a meeting? Opening a meeting, recognizing speakers? Adjourning a meeting, do we have to take a vote for the mayor or the chair of the meeting to recognize the speaker? That's what's gonna be next?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is my report.
I asked, I asked the question.
This is, this is my report.
I am still the chair, I asked, but it's an item on the agenda. If it was a report, it would just be under the report, it is an item.
It is under the report.
And I'm asking the report.
It is under the report.
You specifically directed your comments to me and I responded, and now I'm asking the attorneys the question. You, you would have the floor, it's, it's, it's an item, all of us.
You just, you just said you gave your report and you didn't have to have any discussion on it, you didn't want any discussion on it.
This is, uh, this is an item on the agenda, item twelve for discussion. You've opened the item for discussion, and I'm asking the attorneys a question. Mister Attorney, Madam Attorney, you're recognized.
The Miramar City Commission Procedures state that the mayor shall serve as the presiding officer at all commission meetings. In Section Two A, it also says the mayor shall decide all questions of order unless an appeal is made to the other members of the commission. In such event, a majority vote of the commission will govern such questions of order.
And question of order is defined as what?
Unfortunately, it doesn't say that, but it goes on to say the mayor may request an interpretation of parliamentary procedure from the city attorney. The mayor shall announce agenda items by the agenda, um, in item order.
And what does it say about adjournment?
It does also state in another section that if there's any questions as to, um, procedure, that the, um, commission may resort to Robert's Rules of Order to settle that issue.
So procedure during the meeting?
I'm not, I'm not trying to understand your question.
You're saying a question during procedure, procedures are usually, are, are in motion during a meeting.
Right, that's correct, if there's any issue that is, um, a conflict with, with the commission members, um, there may be a request to take a vote to default to Robert's Rules of Order to resolve that particular item or question.
And what does Robert Rules of Order say about adjournment?
Generally, Robert's Rules of Order requires that a commission or collegial body operate by motion. Um, so if there's an issue concerning whether or not a meeting should adjourn, and there's a default to Robert's Rules of Order, that would require that a motion be made to adjourn and a second, and then a majority vote concerning that particular, um, call.
And does the city of Miramar commission meeting follow Robert Rules of Order?
No, it specifically states that the commission, um, meetings are to be informal in nature. And that's, and I read to you just before, what the rules or procedure rules require as duties and responsibilities is of the chair.
So it's informal unless we need to resolve an issue, and then we follow Ro- Robert's Rules of Order?
Right, there would be, there'd be a request by either the chair or a commissioner who has an issue with whatever the, um, item of order, let's use that as the example, that's being disputed, to default to Robert's Rules of Order.
And final question, that would be during the course of the meeting or a standing position of adjournment?
Clearly, yes, during the course of the meeting. Yes, during the course of the meeting, if there's no meeting, then there wouldn't be any issue concerning, um, an item because the meeting is.
So it'd have to be requested during the meeting?
Excuse me?
So it'd have to be requested during the meeting?
Right, because you'd have to be meeting for there to be an issue.
Okay, alright.
Before you, in regards to, in regards to, um, doing the collegial thing, and have more of a democratic process here, where we actually get to vote to end the meeting. Miss Attorney, how do we, what is the best way, um, for us to address that? Um, I do wanna hear from my, my other colleagues on it, see how they feel about it. But how do we, how do we change those procedures? Can we do that with just getting a consensus this evening?
Under Section Six of the Procedures, it states that the commission may waive any of these procedures by majority vote.
Okay.
So.
So is there a procedure that we would need to, to waive? Is that the action that we would have to take?
I'm not trying to understand your question, I mean, if there's.
Going forward, going forward, customarily, the meeting just ends, the mayor ends the meeting, there is no motion. Everything, every other item on here, we deal with it as a first and second, and we vote on it. Most meetings, they end with a first, a second motion, and it's voted on to end the meeting. I am asking, what is the procedure for us to change that, for us to, do we need, how do we put that in our procedures? Cause as far as I know, it's, there is nothing in the procedures currently to address that. Can we just vote on that tonight?
Right, you just simply make a motion to amend the rules or procedures adopted to provide that, to adjourn a meeting, that there would be a motion, a second, and it would be by majority vote to end the meeting.
I would like to give my colleagues a, a opportunity to weigh in on that, and I would like to make that motion at the appropriate time, if that's something that's the will of the commission.
Commissioner Davis, I mean Commissioner Chambers followed by Commissioner Davis.
Thank you. Since I'm on the receiving end of those abrupt meeting, most of the time, um, I tend to seems to, can handle it as a male. But what happened at the last meeting did not sit well with me when, and it doesn't look good when this is done to a woman, a female. Just does not look good in this time when years, women have been disrespected, treated badly. They still earn less than what, uh, men earn. And, um, like the attorney stated, the only time you can have a, uh, discussion is while you're in a meeting. If the meeting is ended, then you don't have an opportunity to rebut or just to say anything. So the, the, the language is very clear as to what, um, the attorney explained. Also, we're changing the rules, it's very clear, can be done. In my men's group at church, we do take a motion to end the meeting. So it's quite formal, quite, um, used more often than none to request a motion to end the meeting. Cause what it does, it gave, will give someone else an opportunity to be aware that the meeting gonna be ended, and if they have a, an opinion or they wanna say something, that provide an opportunity. So I think the same should, uh, applies here. Um, I, I just wanna touch on another topic, but since we, um, trying to clear up some things here, the housekeeping. And most of the time, it's about, uh, the proclamation. Proclamation should be done, can be, either be done to the mayor office, we do have a city clerk which is very capable. If the mayor's not around, that can issue a proclamation, just to make sure what is requested is clear, it's a seal, it's a stump. It's not a big deal. So, um, we do have residents or businesses that make last minute requests, for whatever reason, they, not aware of the timeline, uh, what's in place by the mayor office, they don't know. So if they request a proclamation, we try to, um, provide that to our residents and businesses. And my third topic is something that keeps reoccurring every now and then, it used to be quite frequent, but recently at the Fourth of July, I just wanna say it's five elected official here. Sometime we have four on stage, and sometime we end up with an alternate, an alternate, an alternate, it seems to be, make it six. And we shouldn't have a first lady come on stage, there's nothing in the charter says we have a first lady. And we don't want somebody coming on stage and getting involved in our business and saying things that they're not supposed to be saying. It can't be, that shouldn't be done, but that's another thing we need to put a stop to, to make sure no one is interfering. No one who is not an elected official is interfering with elected official business. That need to be very clear. I don't like it, and if it keep continuing, it need to stop. And I want the attorney to address that also. With that said, I'm gonna rest here, and I hear from my fellow commissioner, and then we move forward.
I don't know what you're trying to insinuate. I don't know what you're trying to insinuate, but my better half never interferes with anyone on this commission. And you can do or say what you want. If I want to, if my, if I want my wife to join me on any stage during any city event, there is no one that will stop that.
That's quite okay. We're not trying to stop that. We're not trying to stop that. That's not what we're trying to stop.
Can we move the item? If y'all want to vote to adjourn the meeting, that is okay with me. So this is very embarrassing for our city. We've just spent an hour talking about nonsense. Nonsense.
That's what we did at-
Vote your procedure, let's move the agenda, give away all the proclamations you want. Don't give this public the perception that my office is an issue with proclamations, okay? I can cite many examples on the procedures that you all voted for, for proclamations that you don't abide. I've had my assistant on sick days, or officially off from work, in your offices, come to my office for commission, for proclamation requests, a day before the event, when it's supposed to be seven days before. Two days, same day, and my office responds. So I take offense to any insinuation, especially after my staff and my office bends their backs for your not planning to recognize residents. So don't sit here and try to make that insinuation. I take offense to that. And this is so embarrassing for our community. That is the level, and the only reason this has not bubbled up before is because I've refrained from allowing it to. But enough is enough. Pass whatever procedures you want. This community knows who's their mayor. Give whatever keys to the city you want. This city knows who their mayor is. There is no issue with me. And again, during our reports, I don't have to have a rebut. You don't have to have a rebut. There is no obligation to have a discussion on a commission member's or the mayor's items on the report. And on the last meeting, the attorneys gave their announcement, the city manager had his report, each of you had your report, and when we end our commission meetings, every agenda item is complete. There's no other business to discuss. So call your vote. If I have another comment during my report, I don't have to have discussion on my report. If that's the purpose of wanting to adjourn the meeting, so there could be an opportunity to rebut, a report is a report.
Actually, if we could just hear from everyone right now, other than yourself-
Commissioner Davis, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you. So on the issue of, and it seems to be there's an issue with the, having the last word, the last word, and I've found myself in a situation where somebody's giving a report, and after I've said my piece, they use that as a springboard for what they're going to say. And then it doesn't give you the opportunity to respond because your time's up, yet because you went ahead of that particular commissioner, and they use fodder from what you said to make themselves look good, and you have no opportunity to respond. So I am all for having a motion, because then it gives us the opportunity to have a comeback, because I have found that to be the case, even with myself. And when you, you make a statement, somebody uses that and begins to criticize you, and then because your time is up, you have, you don't have an opportunity to respond, and that's just unfair. Because again, the reports are for us to talk about any and everything. And if you're going to talk about any and everything, and somebody wants to come back on a discussion that they know is about them, they should have that opportunity. And, and I think that's what's lacking. It's, this is not an autocracy. This is a democracy, and people should have the opportunity to rebuff, to speak on when somebody's referring to them or specific incidents that they are involved in, just to clear the ear. And this is not a popularity contest. This is not something where I want all Miramar residents to love me because I'm the best since sliced bread, I'm the best gift to the city of Miramar. And whoever feels that way, and it comes across that way, a lot of the times, that's, it's like I'm better than, I'm smarter than, I'm the gift to the world, I don't know who spoiled who. But each individual here is elected, and each person needs to be respected and not talked down to, or feel they are less than or less important. And I get that specific feeling when I hear some of the discussion up here. It's not just against women, it's against people that they may feel are not as educated, they feel somehow that, you know, they can speak with a better tone or language system, but they're just fooling themselves. Because at the end of the day, we are all elected by the people, and none of us is better than the next person, and none of us should be led to feel that we are inferior or less than, and that is happening a lot on this stage. Many of us, all of us, actually are immigrants. None of us were born with a gold spoon in our mouth, despite how they feel about themselves. And I think humility is paramount, and for those who feel that they're the humblest and the most nicest and compassionate person ever, they too have flaws, and they need to be recognized that you are. You have flaws, as my mother would say, we need to repent, and be sure to treat each person with respect. So I, again, as far as that voting to close the meeting, I'm all for it, because then everybody will have an opportunity to say their piece. Thank you.
Is there a motion on the floor?
No, I have some-
Commissioner Barnes, you're recognized.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't imagine, I actually have something to say. Let me just say this. I have no interest whatsoever in making any changes to those procedures, so I can seek out ways for personal attenuation. Yeah, I like fancy words. I'm prepared to continue in a mode of service to the city of Miramar, nothing less, nothing more. We continue as a body to embarrass ourselves, the history of the city of Miramar, the residents of the city of Miramar. Again, I am saying, I have no desire whatsoever to intimidate staff or to embarrass management. Mr. Mayor, can I just give my notices now of upcoming events, so we could save some time? I have a bookbag giveaway coming up on the twenty-third of this month at Anson Sports Complex, and our Citizenship Drive is coming up on Saturday, August thirteenth, at the Vernon Parkway Center on Miramar Parkway, ten a.m. until two p.m. I thank you.
We still on my item?
Your Vice Mayor, you're recognized. You have a motion?
Thank you very much. You have a comment? Did you want to make that comment before I made the motion?
Commissioner Chambers?
It's, good thing I make myself a seat at the table, and I'm not on the menu. Now, the mayor was the one who rumbled on for ten, maybe twenty minutes at the last meeting about the keys and proclamation. Now, I, I wouldn't have had a problem with him, said, look, my colleague, next time or moving forward, let's go to my office and move on, but it's went on, I mean, I'm, went on for a while, and I'm not going to get back that ten, twenty minutes of my life. Addressing the other issue, I, I'm not saying that one spouse cannot be on stage, that's not the issue, but if one spouse is on stage with elected officials, they should know their place. We should not have no interaction, none whatsoever, with any of the elected official. So how do we stop that? It's embarrassing, it's not supposed to be. I, I don't think we have to deal with that. That could be classified as terror, terrorism. We're elected, we're supposed to be there, we're doing our duty. I don't need one spouse to come say anything to me or say anything to one of my colleagues, no. While you're kind of, I've been staying Jamaica. But that's what I'm saying. I'm not stopping anyone from bringing their spouse up. Let's get that straight. So as a body here, whatever changes that we can put in place to make sure that things stay kosher, we should do that. And I'm prepared to vote, make things happen.
Ms. Attorney, can you frame that motion again for me, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
And I know, sorry, that you have your, um, motion, but the second issue that was brought and raised by Commissioner Chambers, and hopefully this will be addressed when we have our events discussion, but I feel that, you know, people start bringing their family up on stage. And it's, it's not at every event, it's at certain events, certain, in front of certain crowds. It's very, it's, it's, you know, when, when do you bring your son and your grandchildren and your parents and everybody on stage? I mean, it's got to be a sense of decorum. I don't think it's appropriate, just bringing family and business partners on stage with you.
Who's doing that? I bring my wife on the stage, so who are you? You must be talking about the Vice Mayor, Commissioner Barnes, or someone else.
But you're being very rude and disrespectful right now.
Vice Mayor, you, your topic is talking about the two items, so we can talk, we can continue to talk about this, but at least get the item out of the way. And I'm, and I'm glad that all of this is coming out on the city of Miramar. Now we see how the commission really feels, and the energy behind that, so can we move this item and just move on with the commission meeting, please?
Well, let me finish.
Please.
So with regards to behaviors on stage, there has been precedent set about disruptive behavior on stage, and comments and interference with programming by persons who have been on stage, who are not elected. So if we're going to start airing the dirty laundry, we can do so, but in order to keep it the way it should be, I think it's best that there should be some kind of policy or procedure set as to who goes on the stage. You could say, let me have my grandbaby on stage. I mean, this is not, this is not that kind of party. So if you want to bring somebody on stage, I may want to bring somebody on stage, other people want to bring people on stage, there's got to be some kind of decorum, and that's all I'm saying, and that's what we need to establish.
I understand.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'm asking the attorney if they, if he would please phrase the motion.
The motion of the Miramar City Commission to amend Paragraph Five of the commission meeting procedures to provide that the meeting shall be adjourned by motion and majority vote of the commission.
May I have a motion, please?
So said, so motioned.
Second.
Record the votes.
Commissioner Barnes?
No.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Colburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Massa?
No.
You have another motion, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm still, I, I'm still on this, on the rest of this topic, that's, this has come up as well. There are a few things that were said, there, there, we've, we've gone on, there are a few things that you said, but in terms of our attorney, our attorneys, they don't stay away because they don't want to get in between us. They actually, they actually know the law, the rules, and we turn to them in order for clarification, so I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that. There is a lot of saying, you know, a couple of individuals, oh, this is embarrassing. Well, this is a forum where we discuss things. So I don't, when we say it's embarrassing, I don't know what that means, because each of us have the opportunity to speak professionally and address the issue. So I, I don't know where the embarrassing comes, where the embarrassing comes in. If you have something to talk about, then this is a forum to do so, and this is what we're doing here today. I didn't create this. This was created from last, from last meeting's actions, so my, my effort in bringing it today is that we can go ahead and put some things in place so that this type of behavior wouldn't happen again. I know that Commissioner Chambers and Commissioner Davis brought up an issue about having people on stage. I would say I have the same concern that you do, in particular, the individual that you're referring to. I think when there is a safety issue for elected officials, at a minimum, when there is a safety concern, we need to be advised. So, so yes, I think we need to, we really need to look into who's coming up on, on the stage with us when we're invited to the stage. And yes, when it comes to informing and notifying and letting somebody know, if you're going to bring somebody up on stage, that could be an issue, we should be notified, and so should, so should authorities. So however you wish to deal with that, however, whatever you wish to recommend or move forward with that, I don't know if the attorney has input in that, but I would certainly agree that it's something that should be addressed. So for the, for the attorneys-
Should that also include daughters' birthday parties on the Commission Chambers balcony? Should that also include any family members that attend to anything in the city of Miramar? Just think about how ridiculous this sounds. How ridiculous this sounds, and you can vote on whatever you said. I'll be on the record, just like I said before, no matter what you decide, if I choose to bring my wife on the stage with me, I will. So let's have the motion and let's move the meeting.
As the attorneys, how would we proceed in terms of this? Would it be just procedurally?
I don't, frankly, I don't think that it'd be, an attempt to make an omnibus motion to adjourn- Frankly, I don't think that an attempt to make an omnibus motion to address this would be, would make sense. I mean, this is something that's more a safety issue or, I mean, a meeting by, event by event issue. I mean, if you're at an event and there's a small stage and you don't know who's coming up, you turn to your safety protocols to deal with that issue. But to frankly, to sit here and say, we're gonna make a motion that X, Y, and Z is gonna go up on the stage, I don't, I don't think that's a workable solution.
Right. I, I think it's more procedural and more into, more, more policy related, I feel, in terms of who should be onstage at particular events. I just don't think it's all and sundry. So if you don't have an answer to that now, maybe I'll bring something back.
Yeah, I think that'd be the better, the better course. It just sounds to me that, you know, you're looking for some guidance here, and I think the better practice would simply be that if there's an event that's planned and there's an anticipation of people wanting to be on the stage with a platform, that that should be worked out, you know, right around the time you're having your event. But I'll, I'll, I will take a look at it and see if there's something that we can provide each of you to look at and see if it makes sense.
It's only us, because there's been some safety concerns with certain folks coming
Let me speak to some clarity for this item. It's not just coming on stage and space and safety. The problem is, when one individual have run-ins with three elected officials verbally and threaten, and have an issue, then that's what we're looking at. That's what, that's, that's my concern. I don't want somebody's spouse or the mayor's spouse, whoever's spouse come, want to argue with me about me doing my job or interfering with what we are doing. I don't want that to happen to Vice Mayor Colburn. I don't want that to happen to Commissioner Davis. But that's the issue at hand. It's people who are not elected trying to dabble in our business and create a safety issue where police have to be called, the FBI have to get involved, and all that type of thing. I had to threaten, if, the, the couple of city managers back to get this person off my back, because I feel like I would be terrorized at my workplace. That's the damn issue. And that's what we need to address, either tonight or at another meeting. So we can be very clear, do we need security from the Miramar PD to be there? Those are the problems that I'm having. So I don't want people coming out here acting like they're high and mighty and yada, 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 and try to spin things their damn way. No, it's not happening. This is the Miramar City Commission. And for my colleague to get up and leave, I don't understand what's going on with him too. The most intellectually laziest person I've ever seen in all my life.
Can we have a, a motion or whatever we're gonna do with, with this, please?
I think in terms of having other individuals on the stage, or family members, or folks that are not elected, I, I just want to say that when we are called to the stage as elected officials, when we had, whether it's an event or for whatever the reason, I always try to come because I feel it's my duty, it's my, I'm there in an official capacity. And where I may have other people along with me, whatever it is that I'm attending, it's just me, and I'm really just assuming that if it's elected officials on this body, I'm on, I'm assuming that those are the individuals that will be there with me. To have someone just spring up next to you or, or onstage with you, when there is some sort of a, a, a history behind or issues behind that, I think that's unfortunate that that happened. And I don't think that I personally should be placed in that position. And I don't think my colleagues should be placed in that position. And I think, Mr. Mayor, that is something that you need to hear what we're saying to you and, and, and be reasonable and just deal with this differently as we move forward.
Onto commission reports. Commissioner Davis, you have a report?
I would just like to thank our Parks Department, our marketing, Public Works, Police and Fire, for their help in making sure that the Taste of the Caribbean Islands was a success. I, I'd like to thank their department heads, the ACMs responsible, newly appointed ACM Burden and ACM Johnson, and of course, our deputy and our city manager for allowing us to be able to present a great event with the different facets that it had this year. Fun was had by all, and it really put Miramar in a good light. Despite the doom and gloom that's been mentioned here, we are a beacon in this county, in fact. And folks from all over came, this is one of the few events that was hosted to commemorate Caribbean American Heritage Month. And I'm, I'm really proud of the work that we put in and the caliber of events that we produce and the work that is put in by staff. So thank you, thank you, and looking forward to continue working with everyone so that we can continue to be the beacon of light in this great county.
Commissioner Chambers?
Thank you. Very pleased that we are addressing some of these issues tonight. Should have been taken care of at the last meeting, but better late than never. I just want to announce that we're gonna have a back-to-school health and wellness giveaway at the Emmanuel Apostolic Church in East Miramar, July 23rd, from 10 a.m., I believe it's to 3 p.m. I don't have my notes with me. But we want to encourage everyone to, on the website, Facebook, and share that information so we could sign up and the families who need school supplies, they should come on out and get some school supplies. The family who want to do the health check, that will be happening that day, July 23rd, Emmanuel Apostolic Church in East Miramar. Thanks to Commissioner Davis for Taste of the Cabin. And thanks to the employees of Parks and Rec and everyone that participates to make sure we have a successful event. Once again, thanks to this great city of Miramar. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Colburn?
I don't have anything else at this point. I just wish that we can resolve this issue where it comes to us being onstage with an individual who has, has threatened us. We need to move forward with that, and we shouldn't ignore it. So we cannot have your wife threatening us and then have.
Excuse me. My wife has never threatened anyone on here, and I would advise you just to keep her name and any reference of her out of your mouth. Thank you. City manager, you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to quickly say that this month is Parks and Recreation Month. I want to give a real big shout out to Parks and Rec. They have done tremendous work over the years and through the director, Elizabeth Valera and her team, Bill and Neil, Janine, Janine Allen, and the rest of the, the team, they really had shown us, and they, they win me over at the Parks and Rec from utilities. But I, I really want to, to, to give them a real big shout out at the kind of work they do. And the Fourth of July celebration was a testament to the kind of operation that they do. In addition to that, I also want to thank the Police Department for the Fourth of July keeping us safe. And it was a really good event that went seamlessly. So once again, Parks and Rec and PD, thank you very much. And to all the staff, this month is Park and Rec Month, so I really want to pay special attention to them. Thank you.
City attorneys?
Thank you. This is an announcement of a notice of executive closed-door session of the city of Miramar at approximately 6:30 p.m. on August the 17th, 2022, or as soon thereafter. As it may be heard, the city commissions shall meet privately to discuss pending litigation pursuant to section 286.0118 Florida statutes for the following case, Joshua Perez versus City of Miramar, fire rescue, Gallagher Basset Services, Inc., Division of Administrative Hearings, Office of Judges, compensation claims, case number 20-009311D A L. This executive closed-door session will take place on the third floor conference room at 2300 Civic Center Place, Miramar, Florida. President, the attorney-client session will be Mayor Nessam, Vice Mayor Colburn, Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Chambers, City Manager Roy Burgen, and attorneys, city attorneys Bernardet Norris Weeks, Lauren Powell, Michelle Austin Pammy, Lorna Brown Burton, and on the record court reporters. The estimated length of the attorney-client session will be 25 minutes. Thank you very much.
Includes your report?
Yes, sir, it does.
Thank you. Just to the residents, it's an honor to serve you as your mayor. And I'll continue to serve with distinction and humbleness, and will always be here for the call, and will speak truth to power. Thank you so much. Does the commission want to give their adjournment motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Adjourned.
No one voted.
For Waste Pro at 954-967-4200. For more information, please visit miramarfl.gov/solidwaste.